All right. I hereby call to order and open the continued public hearing of the Planning Board on Tuesday, December 1st at 6:00 PM to consider the request by 30 Fort Hill Road, 1776 Brewing Company, LLC to amend an existing special permit. As this is a continuation, if anyone wants to speak to something not on the Planning Board agenda, they can do so at our next regularly scheduled meeting. In our last meeting, the Planning Board requested that the applicant provide us with a site map to scale, and we scheduled and performed a site visit to examine the lighting around the premises. We also had some homework to examine the criteria in Section 10.14 of the East Hampton zoning ordinance regarding parking, paving, et cetera. At the last meeting, we also began the process of considering some conditions. This evening, we'll ask the applicant to produce the requested site map and discuss the memorandum that they delivered to us today. We'll discuss the site visit and Section 10.14. As there's some new information here, we'll give the public a chance to speak on the specific issues we're discussing after the applicant presents and we ask our questions and discuss the site visit. As always, I ask for brevity in any such comments, and I will continue to hold to an eight-minute time limit. The Board will then discuss in more depth what conditions we deem appropriate. Does that work for everyone?
Yeah.
So that means the first order of business we have is to approve the minutes from November 17th, our last meeting. Does everyone -- do you have a chance to look at that?
Yes, I did.
Are there any comments or changes? Is there a motion to approve the amendment?
I think a motion to approve the minutes on the 17th of November.
I second that.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All against? Any abstentions?
I abstain.
Abstain? Okay. All right. Now, I wonder if the applicant would come forward and tell us a little about the memorandum, and you have the site map to scale. Thank you. You guys want to take a look?
You guys would like to see this? You get over here, I'll go over there.
It's all right.
Okay. So, one inch equals 30 feet?
That's what I'm doing.
This is the big issue for me, is there five feet there? We're gonna have to clarify that. Okay.
Now, he's moving over here, down here. Is that what he's saying?
I think he had parking -- yeah. I think you had parking on this side originally, in the original map, did you not?
Yes.
He did.
He just moved it this way. He moved it down towards the brewery, right?
Yeah, we're just moving it closer.
Closer. Okay.
I guess because it was a formatting error, because my architect's kind of old-school. He likes to do things by hand. Unfortunately, he hasn't developed the modern age. There are only 24 spaces.
24 there.
Let's verify that. One. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. I don't want to write on it, but remember nine. One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine. That makes it easy. One, two, three, four, five, six.
24.
24. Well, there's an error. I mean, unless there's kind of a little sliver there, but that certainly doesn't look like it's going to be a space.
No.
Make sure you guys speak up, please, too.
So, Rebecca Thibault from Doherty Wallace, Pillsbury &amp; Murphy, here on behalf of Fort Hill Brewery with Eric Bersens.
Well, I got a question that I want.
So, for the 24 spaces, which you just counted and we see is incorrect, I believe our architect also drew the spots bigger than is required, so I think we can get in there an additional spot to come to the 60, because our understanding is that the spots need to be nine by 20 feet, except for the requirement for the handicap spots. Do you want to keep reviewing?
I think we should move forward to your memorandum, unless anyone has any questions about this map specifically. Go ahead.
Okay, thanks. So, just to review, we're here asking for amendments because the business has evolved and grown, and we realize that the neighbors, as our physical neighbors, also have a say in this process, and we are willing to make some concessions that we feel might not necessarily be required of other breweries, so we appreciate the opportunity to present our issues as well. In terms of the first three points on the memo, I basically just summarized what happened at the last meeting and the language that was used in the last meeting. The actual conditions, I -- we requested some additional clarifying language in the incidental brewery activities, just to make clear that we're -- the pouring permit itself is not prohibited by the fact that we're allowed to do -- is not prohibited, and we're allowed to do the retail activity. With the operation of the tasting room, I set forth the hours that you had set forth last time, and we went over a crowd control plan, but given that the business is continually evolving, I didn't think it was wise to put in there the exact -- every step of that crowd control plan, but just to say that we have a crowd control plan, we will implement it.
And in regards to the crowd control plan, we did a survey this -- last Saturday. We had a fairly successful weekend, given that it was Thanksgiving. We had a lot of people coming back to East Hampton to visit their friends and family. We took a survey of the room. There were approximately 60 people, which was fairly full, and then we did a count of all the cars, and there were approximately 35 cars. So, that sort of gives you an idea of, in a maximum capacity, the load of people that we're dealing with.
With point three, the outdoor music, I made it -- I'm -- we're requesting that it be slightly more general in terms of utilizing a portable sound barrier, not necessarily requiring Plexiglas, just in case that isn't effective. We would want to be able to change that out without having to come back and change the entire permit. With the parking and access, we have the plan. We spoke with Jessica about the number of spots and the paving requirement, because I think no one here wants to see the entire lot paved. So, the idea was that the minimum amount be paved based on the uses, and so if you look at the requirement for the manufacturing, based on the manufacturing use, which is based on the size, we come out to 19 spots, based on a 10,000-square-foot building. And then, we felt that we needed to also account for the tasting room and that use. And so, I went through a comparative analysis, because obviously tasting room is not a use in your zoning ordinances, so what is the requirement for a restaurant or bar at the max, which restaurant or bar calculates seating requirement, parking requirement, based on the seating capacity of the restaurant or bar? And so, it wasn't a great comparison, because we have an occupancy capacity of 87. So, if we calculated the requirement of 87 seats, which isn't really reasonable, that would require 22 spots plus a number for employees, because the restaurant or bar requires one spot for four seats. If we look at what's required for other retail uses, that requires three spots, and that would be based on the size of the tasting room at 600 square feet. And that's strictly a size requirement in the Table 10.3 of the zoning ordinance. If we look at membership club, that requires 12 spots, based on the size as well. We are proposing paving 25 spots, which would be the 19 plus six additional spot -- the 19 required of a manufacturing plus six additional for the tasting room, and we believe that's a fair number, because, A, you have the gravel spots to accommodate beyond that, and we feel we are different enough from those other uses. We don't think we're as low as other retail uses, which would only require three spots, but a membership club serves multiple kinds of beer, it generally has longer operating hours, and sometimes serves food, and we feel those differences are enough to make it so that we don't -- we shouldn't have to have the 12 spots that would be required of a membership club. It also meets the goal of minimizing environmental, not necessarily damage, but impacts, based on having a greater impervious surface.
I never could speak on that note. All right. So, in the wintertime, when the snow is melting, there's about two days of the year when there is a massive amount of water just coming down Fort Hill Road. This comes from our neighbor's property, and we, when we originally designed the site plan, of course, we integrated this, but we have taken precautions amongst ourselves to put in a trench along Fort Hill Road in order to accommodate a massive amount of water. But for about two days of the year, there is just a ginormous flow of water going down Fort Hill Road, and it will go past Fort Hill, the property, and it will create massive amounts of erosion. So, even though the surveyor did her job, and we have a very sandy soil, so our soil is able to accommodate a huge amount of drainage. We already have two areas where the water is flowed over the backside, but, you know, their nature does its thing, and it's going to be pretty impressive, the amount of water that goes down Fort Hill Road. Not because of our property, but because of the neighbors. Not those neighbors, the ones that are angry. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Please continue.
So, typically, my understanding is your job is to ensure minimum amount of parking to accommodate. Here, Fort Hill Brewery has adequate space for more than the minimum, and that by allowing parking to be increased on its property, it will ensure that people aren't parking on the road and creating other problems. So, we proposed 25 spots. We also heard that there may be a concern about seeing the driveway area access in and out of the lot, and so we proposed putting reflectors there to minimize the need to put in more lights, which --
Can you show us where these 25 spots would be?
So, the paved spots?
Yeah, and show it, kind of just indicate where it would be paved.
So, I think Eric can generally indicate where they'll be paved, but we -- and we had spoke -- I had spoken with Jessica about this.
So, the majority would be in this bulk?
Okay.
And then?
Which is 14 spots there, and you're saying 25, so nine more would be added?
Let's say, the front of the building, so it's easier to plow. We wouldn't degrade our property by having excess surface area exposed to the plow, so let's say that.
And the driveway would be paved as well?
Yes. And mostly, when we had experienced a fairly large amount of people this weekend, we had people parking up until here. They weren't really going back.
And the handicap spots would be included in the paving as well?
Absolutely.
And the reflectors, since you're standing here?
Those are here.
Okay.
No lights, just reflectors.
Well, I think we're going to get to that, right?
No lights, just reflectors.
For the driveway, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Please continue.
So, the reason we also wanted to keep the -- we didn't want to specify exactly every spot that would be paved, but we're just requesting a requirement that 25 spots be paved in accordance with the special permit zoning ordinance requirements, is because we want to be able to look at the drainage of the site and figure out which spots will be -- how we can minimize the amount of paving while maximizing the environmental benefits and minimize environmental degradation. As far as lighting, which was discussed, but not out of compliance with the open meeting law, at the site visit, we would like to propose that we provide adequate lighting for the parking lot, which I think would be best by just putting it on the building like it was in the, I'll call it, the front of the building, the part of the building that faces the field.
This part? This part? Sorry.
Yeah, so this was where the lights you had indicated were good, and they seemed to go out pretty far. So, if we put lights on the building to light these areas faced down, too, so that they're not projecting outwards too much.
And we can put them higher up on the building, because that side of the building is pretty high.
Can you guys speak up, so that everybody can hear, please? Thank you.
We could put the lights up a little higher on the building, so that they project a little bit more outwards and do not disturb them.
Now, we'll move this side of the building here, where the handicap spots are. They'll be lighted.
We can certainly include that.
Should be.
We do have lighting underneath the porch, so it was fairly well.
No, but you're going to have the outer parking areas. I think the lighting should be reflected outward more.
Fair enough.
Could you put one up on the second level there? That might project out a little.
Yeah, we could put it right at the crux, so that it --
Yeah, that's true.
Safety is a big concern of ours, for obvious reasons. It's what we do here. And I'm not going to name names, but one of the Planning Board members did trip on the way out of the lot, as they were coming this way, and I think lighting, lighting in this area, especially coming in and out, is really important. And I, this is just my opinion, but I think that these lights they're putting here are needed, and it's a good suggestion. I think that'll solve this problem. But I think some light here is kind of essential. It's just, it's just too dark over on this side. And these lights will shed that way, and that way, and that way, and that way, and that's great. It's a big improvement, but this is just dark.
And I would add that probably this corner is going to be pretty dark, too, based on my recollection.
Now, what's being suggested?
With all due respect, though, we do have some hops growing here, and we are going to plan on growing more, and 24 hours of light do not do hops justice. They really do need to sleep a little bit, so if we do flood our property with lights, you know, we can --
I tend to think that these lights here will cover this well, which is, we have precedence with auxiliary parking and not having everything paved. This has been done before. In, but this section that you're considering paving, this one spot here, do you have hops near here?
No, we've got the giant sycamore tree that was required not to get cut down.
We could attach a light to that, I don't know, but this area here, or at least maybe one light in this direction off the building?
How about over here?
I think it's more about wiring.
No, 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 we've got a giant sycamore tree that's going to do it.
But it also has --
I mean, that would work for me, too. Basically, just something that kind of covers this area.
Yeah, isn't there an electrical box at the entrance there?
Oh, I don't believe, everything's underground. It's fairly --
I think there was a box there.
Okay. So, I know one of the guides in 10.14 was that this be five feet away, which at the site visit, it looked close. I didn't measure it precisely.
It looked okay, but --
It looked okay, so I would just recommend that when you, if we complete this again, make sure that that's --
When we do pave, we'll make sure that it's a full five feet.
All right. Any other questions about lighting or parking?
All right. This back here was okay, because that was pretty well lit when we were up here. It was like a shadow coming up here, we could see it. But from here to here was absolutely black, back in here. I mean, it was just black, black, black.
So, that's why they're going to add lighting up here?
Yeah. He's going to put an awful lot of lighting, like, right in here. He's going to have parking over the side. He can do that.
I mean, I think one thing we could say is, you know, that there has to be lighting that's sufficient to light all of the parking spaces, including the auxiliary spaces, and I think exactly how that is accomplished may not be something we need to say, as long as we know.
The intent, yeah.
That the intent is that every place where someone is parking their car is going to be safely lit, you know?
Sounds reasonable.
Well, the only way around it, if you want to protect his growth there, you could just eliminate the parking spots on that backside. I mean, you still have all this, and all this, and all this over here, and all that.
Well, that brings up a question. I mean, I think it's possible in your design that these lights on the side could do that trick, but it brings up the question of, with the auxiliary parking, and I personally think that paving 25 spots up front is a good plan between public safety, providing for the handicap, and also preserving runoff capability, et cetera. But with these additional, the auxiliary parking, I'll refer to the non-paved, non-two-minute service, how will you delineate, delimit those spaces? How are they going to be marked, or will they be marked in any way?
Well, we've got a fairly firm gravel right there right now. We've done research online, and they do provide painting material that you can spray down once or twice a season, that withstands weather, both sun, wet water.
So, you're going to mark them, mark the surface of the ground with?
Correct.
Can I just remind the Board that in the past applications, you have not required delineation for the auxiliary parking? So, if you're, if this is something you tend to do, just understand that you may be sending a precedent for future applications.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Any further questions about this?
No.
Is there any way that, if you're concerned about the lighting affecting your crop growing, is there any way that they could be on a separate circuit for those, for that area, so that they could be shut off after hours, or something like that?
We've hired some resourceful people in this town. I'm sure we'll figure it out.
Okay. So, that's something new. I'm going to want to give the public a chance to comment on that, but you've got more of your presentation to get through, so we kind of interrupted. Please continue.
That's okay. Just one other thing is, I had spoken with Jessica about stormwater management plan concerns, and because we, I believe we'll have to have a stormwater management plan approved, based on the size.
Hmm. I may be shooting myself in the foot here, but our stormwater management plan was designed for paving up front, so our current stormwater plan does accommodate for paving the driveway, and I don't recall the exact square footage, but a certain amount of square footage up front.
Can I just ask? I know the condition from the last, the 2011, was that a stormwater plan needed to be approved by the Health Department and the City Engineer. Do they have copies on file? Because I don't have one in the Planning Department.
We do have an extensive report.
Okay.
I thought I submitted what I had to submit, but I will certainly make sure --
If you could just give me a copy of what you already have, so that I have it in the file, that would be helpful.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. Well, that crosses one question I had off of my list, too. All right. So, what you're saying, if I'm understanding correctly, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is that the plan that you're going to give to Jessica, possibly again, is that, is going to apply as well to the new plan here, given that we get through it, to pave 25 spots? Is that correct?
Correct.
You won't have to redo it, because it's still applicable. We'll have to see that. All right. Anything else?
That's all I have. That's it.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I felt this is pretty well put together and gives us something to work with. I'd like to offer, on just specific issues of parking and lighting, because we talked about our site visit a little bit here, and they produced some new information. If there's anyone in the public that wants to talk about the specific issues of parking and lighting and the proposed paving of 25 spaces, is there anyone here that wants to discuss that?
Does that mean we don't get to ask other questions?
We're going to have, we're going to give people an opportunity today to speak on the issues that are being brought before us. So, as issues come up and topics come up that are new?
If it came up last time at the end and wasn't answered, we don't, and nor --
I'm curious, what are you referring to?
You already referred to the fact that you're highly concerned with safety, and at the end of last meeting, I brought up the thing on the bump road, and the mayor said to talk to --
You're talking about the bump, speed bumps, is that?
No, I'm talking about the total safety on the road.
Total safety.
The speed bumps was one. So, if you guys are so concerned with safety, that's --
We are, we're going to, we're going to talk and continue to talk, especially as we get into our discussions about what we're doing for safety in the road for paving, et cetera. But our purview is really outside of what happened. I mean, we don't, we're dealing with this property.
Okay. Can we ask questions about what they just presented?
Yes, please. That's what I'm asking you to come up, which was --
Oh, that wasn't safety.
Which is about parking and lighting. Please state your name and address.
I'm sorry, this is going to screw up your procedure, but they did speak to other things than parking and safety, and one of the things was the membership club. Could you, could they explain, or could you explain what is meant by the club membership, and how that would affect occupancy or the clientele of? Did you not say that, Eric?
We, so, for the, can I?
Please.
Yeah.
So, for the --
Do you want to stand?
Sure.
I'm sorry, I didn't get my name. Janie Thurber, 11 Fort Hill Road. The Thurber, again.
You guys are going to have to share the podium.
So, for the paving requirement, the minimum, we're proposing that only a minimum amount be paved, and that amount be based on the uses of the property. And so, there is a requirement for, based on the size of the building and its use as a manufacturing facility, for 19 spots to be paved. However, we do have the tasting room. There is no use in the zoning ordinances. There's a Table 10.3, which carves out, specifies use, and then how you calculate minimum number of spots.
Right.
And so, there is no use of tasting room, but we felt that we needed to account for that parking somehow, and so, we, I compared it to other like uses. And so, there's restaurant bar, which we think is too high an amount, a membership club, which is, which would have, based on the size, would have required 12 spots.
I'd like to add to that, too, just a little bit, and thank you.
Thank you.
Is that, I am confident Jessica and other members of the Board, and by the way, your question was relevant. That was part of her parking presentation, totally relevant. Thank you.
Okay.
So, we've all gone through looking for uses, because we don't have a tasting room use. So, we're looking, and she used the word "membership club." She also used the word "bar," which could be contentious, but we're looking in our thing for possible uses that are somewhere near what the occupancy of the space is occupancy. That's what we're going for.
Okay. I thought that it related to what I'd understood to be something, Eric, that you might have advertised online as a membership, something. And I don't know? Okay. Then, the safety thing, I still contend, road issues should be concerned before a lot of this stuff is.
Okay, thank you very much. Anyone else? Come on up.
I want to address broader issues at some point.
I apologize for interrupting. I have to have you do your name and add the usual rigmarole.
I'm not sure whether I want to speak now, but we disqualified for speaking later on broader issues.
We're going to have an opportunity to talk about what we're talking about as we record. Right now, it was about the presentation.
I've already spoken once, I cannot speak again. I just wanted to share that. Bert Thurber, 11 Fort Hill Road. The brewery has made, in the proposals, the memorandum that they have given to you, they have reiterated, they stated it twice, that parking will reinforce parking regulation, limiting the number of parking spaces, will help to regulate the number of people in the brewery, will help to regulate occupancy, and that occupancy will help to regulate parking. I actually see no particular logic to this. Let me start by saying that, asking a question, and the question is this. When it was determined that the occupancy of the tasting room would be a maximum of 87 people, was that based upon Mr. Bersens' original contention that the tasting room was 2,000 square feet? Or was it based upon the later correction, which they did not include in their written statements, but did slip in their oral statements, so that it did not appear in the record, that it was in fact 600 square feet? That makes a significant difference. If it were actually 2,000 square feet, it is not. Then, that would, and you had a maximum occupancy of 87. That would allow 23 square feet per person, or a space of just under five feet by five feet. If, on the other hand, the occupancy of 87 is based upon the actual, accurate figure of 600 square feet, that would mean that it would be just under seven square feet per person, which means each person would be working in a space that is two and a half, just over, two and a half feet by two and a half feet, and that's not even taking into account the space occupied by the bar, in a non-bar, the billiard table, or whatever else made, the band, or whatever else may be in the room. So, what I'm suggesting to you is, we have a problem with the occupancy figure. The occupancy figure does not seem to be reasonable. It seems to have been based, I don't know. The question is, was it based on 2,000 square feet, or was it based on 600 square feet? If it's based on 600 square feet, that's not much space per -- If it's based on 600 square feet, that's not much space per person. Now to the issue of the parking. So you have 60 parking spaces. I have not paid close attention to how many occupants there are per car going to the brewery, I have better things to do. But let's assume that there are at least two people in each car. Good chance there'll be three or four. We now have 120 people. For a tasting room that has an occupancy, even, even this tight two and a half feet by two and a half feet of, can only take 87 people. What do we do with the other people? They have said that they'll appoint someone who will have the responsibility for, if they're approaching the maximum number of people, who will go around at 15-minute intervals and count how many people there are in the tasting room. And if they reach a point where they're, they have reached their maximum of 87, which I believe is too high a figure to begin with, then they will, that people will be told that they may not enter until other people have left. Well, that may take care of the tasting room. But if I had come to this destination and were look eager to get into the brewery, and I got there and they told me that there was no space inside the brewery, I would have to wait, I would just go sit in my car in the parking lot. Or I would leave my car parked and I would walk up and down Fort Hill Road. Might walk all the way to the, to Arcadia and back, walk down to the river and back. I would not leave the premises. Therefore, rather than one reinforcing the other, all that happens is, when you reach, what I believe is too high a figure of 87, you will have people who will be gathering in other locations, they will not be leaving the area. So rather than reinforcing it, it simply compounds the problems of people waiting in the parking lot. Or they leave and they come back. And that increases the traffic. So there are real issues concerning the relationship between the square footage, the occupancy, and the parking spaces. And I do not see a consistent logic to what they say. The figures do not add up. I'll speak to other issues at a later point.
Thank you. Anyone else that wants to speak to these issues that we're talking about right now, parking, lighting?
I got one question.
Please, come on up. Name and address, please.
Robert Petruskevich, 15 Fort Hill Road.
Did you get that?
No, I didn't.
I'm sorry.
Robert Petruskevich, 15 Fort Hill Road. On the occupancy, does that 87 include which they are occupants of the building, the laborers that are inside? So if he has 10 people working for him, that means he only is allowed 77 people in the building.
I can, I can address that. There's two, there's two certificates that came from the building department for the inspection. The 87 is for the tasting room, and 108 is for the entire building, including the manufacturing.
Well, I understand that, but if the people are in the tasting room serving them, they are an occupant of that tasting room.
They're a human in the space.
That's right. So if he has five people in that space, that means he has to take that off the people that he allows in the building. Right? Am I right? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? No? Okay. Alright, so we've heard from the applicant, we've discussed our site visit. It's now time for, for us to go through this. I'd like to start with what we've just been working on here and try to hash out the parking and lighting expression on line, try to get that part done first. Does anyone on the board have any comments about this occupancy?
The occupancy was set by the, not by the planning board in this instance, right?
I, I had no part in setting the occupancy.
No, it's a, it's building fire.
Yeah.
Fire, that's the.
Yeah, although we technically can do that as a condition, but we did not do that in this.
I, I'm not sure what the fires criteria is, what the fire department's criteria was. I'm trying to help answer some of your questions. But I, I mean, just personally, I have faith that they know what they're doing.
Have to be down on last Friday night? I don't think so.
So you felt it was too crowded?
Absolutely. I mean, I think it was a good crowd there. I went inside and they put another 50 people on top of what was in there, and on that particular Friday night, it'd be pretty difficult. That's just an observation, I could be wrong.
I didn't look in, so. Anyone else? So we need to kind of come to a decision here whether or not we'd wanna put a condition to alter that, or I don't even know if we have authority to alter that, if the, if the fire department is setting that. My instinct is no, I trust the fire department.
Yeah, it's not our job.
I don't. So you're not interested in pursuing that?
No, I don't think we, we have any grounds to set occupancy.
Alright. So then, with regard to paving 25 spaces and having the recipe auxiliary, lighting on the sides here, here, and here to match the lighting that we saw there, reflective lighting here, paved between its driveway there, and our additional request that we wanna put in that's not in the memorandum of an additional light either here or here.
Right. Either way.
Are we good with the board with that? Do we have any, any comments, any disagreements?
I think it's a good idea to have a light there.
I think we should have a light rather than the reflectors. And also, I wanted to ask, on the handicap, is that the front entrance to that building?
This is the front entrance right here, you gotta speak up so they can hear you. So I'm, I'm talking about a light here, and all those lights in addition to the reflectors at the front.
Right.
Okay.
My only thing is that I'm having a hard time figuring out exactly how the 25 spots are gonna be paved, given the way that this is laid out, because we've got 14 here, we've got 11 here, so if you did like this, then you would get 25, but if you did this, you would get.
Well, they have to leave a gap open so they can get people around this whole thing.
Right, if you did these and these, you get 21, so the math is a little confusing.
I mean, it would, it would obviously have to be this section and probably going all the way over. He's gotta get 25 spaces out of that, but that, I think that number forces a requirement that meets our needs.
Yeah.
Yes?
Yeah, so just thinking, just thinking this through, you know, I'm not like, I appreciate the references of similar uses and what might be appropriate, the final number seems a little bit arbitrary to me. Not necessarily unreasonable, but given, you know, I would, I guess, I just would like to maybe talk a little bit about what we're actually, what our actual basis for the number is.
Okay.
Because, you know, we need to, we need to ground this, and.
This is what was said, if you'll.
Yeah, I've got the.
You wanna read it?
You're talking, yeah, so we've got 22 spots for a restaurant or bar, three spots for other retail uses, 12 spots for a membership club, and 19 required for the manufacturing facility itself.
And that matches my research. Does it yours as well?
For the parking and the zoning? Well, you can check.
So our issue is where are we getting that number six extra for the tasting room from? And the tasting room itself has an occupancy of 87? So six and 87 doesn't match up to me.
That doesn't, but they're not, you have to understand that they're, they're not making that up. They're looking at uses and saying, this is what the use says, this is what the use says, this is what the use says. And that's why they're not coming up with six, they're coming up with 25, because, I mean, that's the reasonable.
Right, so I think what we're talking about here is we're not gonna have, these spaces are gonna be either in use for the tasting room or during the day for the manufacturing facility, but not really for both uses at the same time, so you can count the 25 spaces towards that.
And the reality is, none of these uses apply, so we have to kind of apply our.
That's what I'm saying, none of these uses apply, so does the number actually match the, you know, the capacity that we need here? So. Just curious, what other people think about that?
And to be honest, 25 is a number higher than I was gonna ask. I'm happy with that. Are you? I mean, if you're not, you should say.
It's not that I'm not happy with the number, I just wanna make sure we arrive at it through a reasonable process.
We looked at the best precedents we can find for clear uses in there. 25 is over the requirement for any of them, 22 being the highest. So I mean, that would seem to need a.
Right, so the question is, when you're talking about, this is an incidental use and on top of primary use. That's, so, yes, a restaurant would require 22 spots, but the manufacturing facility requires 19 spots. So if you add them together, you get more than 25, see what I'm saying?
Yeah, but you have, is it true you have five employees, is that what you said? I, I may be misquoting.
Eight and a half.
Eight and a half. So I mean, how much parking?
What?
It's not, typical manufacturing, I don't know what's typical, so, but I mean, in this particular case, looking at it, the employee usage for parking seems pretty minimal.
So just to go back to the zoning though, for, if you wanna calculate parking for a manufacturing industrial establishment using employees, it's 0.75 spaces for each employee of the combined employment of the two largest successive shifts. So essentially, if he's saying he's got eight and a half employees times 0.75, that results in 6.3 spaces that would be required for the manufacturing side.
Leaving then of the, well, I mean, there's parking for 60, but paved, that would leave nine.
You can always put the employees in the back, though.
Jessica.
There's ways around us.
Jessica, in your opinion, is 25 a number that we can reasonably arrive at?
It would be better to be able to fit it into, into numbers that match. So if you take 25 minus six, that leaves the 19 spaces remaining that they proposed to pave.
Restaurant or bar would have 22.
Whoops. How big is it, sorry, how big is the tasting room again?
600 square feet?
600 square.
Okay. Which leaves 12 spaces. Per the requirements, it's one space for every 50 feet of assembly area. So if you use the membership club category, 600 divided by 50 is 12, so 12 plus the six is 18 spaces.
Okay.
So they're doing above and beyond even.
And they're offering more, I think we take it.
I'm just trying to figure out the math.
I wanna know, I wanna know the math, I just wanna make sure we're clear on the process. It's not, it's not the final number that we arrive at. Yeah.
Okay?
So. Yeah.
Alright, so we're good on the number of 25. We're good on the lighting that was requested? So we're gonna have to come up with some language for a condition.
Yeah, certainly good.
At this point. And the condition is going to be, and I'm gonna attempt to use some of this here. I wanna find the bituminous language here. Bear with me. The planning board requires that 25 parking spots, including two handicap spots, be paved with bituminous material, including the driveway in the front area of the building with lighting. Should we do the lighting as a separate line?
As a separate.
Let's do it as a separate, okay.
But we should say.
Help me out here.
That it shall be graded and drained so as to dispose of all surface water accumulations.
Like that.
Is that, are you amiable?
Yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Can you say, can you just say it one more time so I have it down correctly?
And shall be graded.
Hold on, from the beginning, from the top, take it from the top, please. Planning board require that 25 spots, including two handicap parking.
Spots.
Spaces.
Be paved.
Be paved with bituminous.
Bituminous surface in the front of the building, including the driveway.
In the front of building, including driveway. Hold on, paved surface shall be graded and drained?
Yep. So as to dispose of all surface.
Dispose of all.
Surface water accumulation.
Water.
And that's just the language from 10.145 about surfacing in the zoning.
Okay, I'm gonna read it back to you so that you, okay. Planning board requires that 25 spots, including two handicap parking spaces, be paved with bituminous material in front of the building, including the driveway. Paved surface shall be graded and drained as to dispose of all surface water accumulation.
Sounds good. Is that good for everybody? Yeah, okay. Move on to lighting, thank you Jessica. The planning board requires, this is a separate condition, that lighting be put on the rear, which, which direction, the north west side.
It'd be south.
South is that way, so, nor, isn't that north?
Yeah.
North. So the northwest side in the front of the building, the rear, the northwest side in the front of the building, at least identical to the lighting that was on the southeast side.
Can you repeat that, please?
Yeah, you're gonna have to. So planning board requires that lighting, lighting be provided in the rear, the northwest side in the front of the building.
Yeah. At, at least at a brightness level, I don't know if that's a good criteria, so you can help me here, that was on the southeast side, cause the southeast side we did like, that was bright.
Yeah.
That was well done.
Yeah, you could walk there, it'd be fine.
That was walk, so that, we, that's what we're looking for as a match of what was there on the other three sides.
Is it sufficient to say, is it, you know, too vague to say sufficient to illuminate all parking spaces?
And we can do that, add that in, sufficient to illuminate all parking spaces.
Okay. I feel like.
Is it too big and bulky? Help me out here.
Okay, so.
Would the board reword this?
It makes sense. If you're parking, you need a spot, you gotta walk, right?
I mean, we could just leave it with lighting sufficient to illuminate all parking spaces, but that's, that's, could be a little vague.
Yeah, I'm just worried about how you use that side as a measurement.
And believe it or not, I still have more in that too, including reflectors in the driveway and a light, either immediately to the left or right of the.
Can I just throw something at the board to think about? Is impact of lighting to abutting properties and making sure that the light isn't shining as to go beyond the property limits. Again, it can be a separate condition, you can make as many as you need, but I think.
It's a good point, I did think about that already when we did the site walk, though, and there's trees, I mean, it's mostly covered all up and down here though, right? So I mean, that, that lighting really doesn't get, get out. I, I think that's a valuable point for a comment for the neighbors. Does anyone wanna speak to lighting reaching their homes? I don't wanna force you. Do you wanna come up? If you wanna come take a peek, please. I have no problem with that.
Joyce Petruskevich, 15 Fort Hill Road.
Thank you. So what's going on with the lighting?
We don't know, we didn't see the plants.
Was, I mean, wouldn't you know already if, if lighting is bothering you?
There's really not that much on the side.
Well, there's not, to me, there's, that place is dark as it is.
Okay.
I mean, right, not right now. I went up there Friday night myself.
Okay.
And I shut my truck lights off and I couldn't see a thing. I mean, the lighting was absolutely black.
So lighting as it is right now isn't, is not a bother to you? I mean, it's, it's difficult to see here, but it's not, like, reaching your home or interfering.
Right.
Exactly.
Yeah, I mean, that's what we're talking about, because we're, we're saying, hey, it's dark here, we wanna put lights in.
Where is your home?
But we wanna make sure the lights don't interfere with your. Well, we appreciate that, but, you know.
We're not talking about any additional lighting on this side.
If they're gonna have that many people coming in and out of that place, like, because that's gravel, there's big rocks, somebody tripped. It's, the driveway's washing out, I don't think it's wide enough. Is there gonna be lights in here for the people parking?
We're recommending a light here or here, right on either one of these two sides. Reflector lights here, additional lights in the front, additional lights on this side, additional lights in the rear, and we feel this side is already well there.
Okay, now my question is.
That's the side that's facing.
We have, somebody's trying to take minutes, and so if we can kind of. You know, I just wanna try to make sure that she's getting everything and she knows who's speaking, so if we can just.
Alright, she's right, you're the one. So, so at this point, the question I have is, has been answered, the lighting is not currently interfering, it's not going into your home. Okay, thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Can I ask one more question on this?
About lighting.
Oh, it was about parking.
And I should have you at the podium and everyone else.
Okay, it was about parking, I just wanted to show this.
Go ahead, right up to the podium.
Alright, between the two handicap, you got that space there?
Yeah.
Now, the day you went, did he have planters at the end somewhere there?
There were planters, and this is roped off up at the top as well.
Okay, how come you don't see the planters there after that day?
I don't see there's an issue. Are you in, in stuff?
Because a lot of times, there's people parking all the way across.
You mean the planters were blocking? I mean, I saw them up at the top where the roped area was.
Yeah, twice.
It looked like they were back a little further
Yeah.
On Saturday morning.
Okay.
And stuff, and usually there's people parking all the way and there's no spaces.
Okay, thank you very much. Alright, well, I don't know what to do about that.
Well, there will be marked parking spaces.
Parking spaces, yeah. Spots, excuse me. Okay, so, back to the lighting language and our condition. You brought up a good point, we should consider the neighbors, we've done that, it's not currently blocking. So the quality of the light that we put up here, and if we put it over here, this area is more, is blocked. Well, I don't, I don't know that that will necessarily impede.
It shouldn't.
We can just say, aimed such that it doesn't shine into Fort Hill Road or something like that.
But I mean, that would just be, why would they do that? It has to be into the.
Well, it's gotta shine out that way anyway.
Yeah, it's not, I feel that's unnecessary. Okay, so, can you read off what we had so far?
So you had was, planning board requires that the lighting will be provided on, in the, in the rear, the northwest side, in front of the building, and then you started saying at least add a illumination similar to something, something, something.
The southeast.
I think you, yeah, okay.
Just maybe not add that part?
Well, that's why I brought up the question in terms of
Sufficient to illuminate the parking lot.
Making that it's not.
How about that, sufficient to illuminate the parking lot?
That's the safety concern, right?
So then forget the southeast and make it instead sufficient to illuminate the parking lot.
Right.
And reflectors will be put at the end of the driveway by Fort Hill Road.
Hold on. Condition three. What is it, reflectors?
Yeah.
Will be placed.
At the end of the driveway.
At.
Near Fort Hill, Fort Hill Road.
End of driveway.
And a light will be placed at the beginning of the driveway, on either side. And what kind of light is the question? Sufficient to illuminate the parking.
The parking lot or the driveway? You're put, you wanna, you're asking for a light at the.
Here or here.
So you're asking for reflectors and some sort of street, like a street lamp?
In one big light up here, because this area is dark and the only other light is coming off the building. And this area was the darkest for.
I can't see, but that's okay.
It's the, it's the top of the driveway, not the bottom of the driveway.
Okay, so you want a light.
Dark spot here where they're coming in.
Okay, so a light at the, and you, um.
The top of the driveway. On either side.
So a light post?
Yeah.
The, two light posts, you want one on either side, is what you're asking, one?
I think you meant one side or the other.
One side or the other.
One side or the other.
Light post will be placed at the top of the driveway.
That's where one of us trips.
Along the parking lot?
Okay.
Or to light the parking lot, or I don't know.
To illuminate the parking lot, sufficient to illuminate the parking lot.
If I can read this later.
It's a mouthful.
Okay.
And, when you're ready, if you can kind of read that back.
A light post will be placed at the top of the driveway along, no, to illuminate the park.
Sufficient to illuminate the parking.
I don't like how it's reading, but. Sufficient to illuminate the parking lot.
Okay.
And you have it too, right?
Can you do the whole thing?
You want all four of them, or just that one?
Just the lighting.
Just the lighting.
All lighting.
Okay, planning board requires that lighting be provided at the rear, the northwest side, in front of the building, sufficient to illuminate the parking lot. The paved parking lot, or the, the whole thing?
The entire part.
The entire.
I'm gonna add the paved and gravel parking lot.
Okay, that's fine.
Number three, reflectors will be placed at the end of the driveway on Fort Hill Road. Number four, a light post will be placed at the top of the driveway sufficient to illuminate the parking lot.
Is everyone good with that? Does anyone have any additional conditions relating, relating to parking or lighting?
Yeah, it's gotta be marked. Gotta put that in there, right?
Be marked, you mean the handicap parking?
Yeah, well, the gravel is gonna mark that.
Being striped.
Oh, that's right, what she said he was gonna mark, okay, and so the fifth one, do you want to come up with some wording for that?
The, all spaces including the gravel auxiliary spaces shall be striped. That.
Painted.
Painted, is the technical term.
I don't know.
It's, it's striped for paved, I mean, you could use the same term for the gravel. You sure you want to go this way? Just telling you, just warning you that this.
Oh, you said before that they don't have to mark them.
We, you have, I'm just, what I'm telling you is in the past, you've not required them to be marked.
Yeah.
If you do this now, you are gonna be setting a precedent for yourself that you may, you are gonna probably require it of.
Yeah.
There's no waiver language to.
Yes, right.
No, that one's gone.
So just the, but, and do we, we don't need a condition that the twenty-five spaces will be paid, will be marked.
You could, if you feel like you want to do that, you can say that, for me personal, as the ADA coordinator of the city, it's more important to me that at least that there's some condition that talks about the handicap spaces will be not only striped, but properly marked as handicap spaces. So that, that, there's no question.
That's fine with me, is everyone else good with that? Can you use that exact language?
What did I say?
The handicap spaces will be marked and, missed the rest of it.
Spaces will be striped?
Be marked to indicate, striped, fine.
I mean, all the spaces, if we're gonna say that, we should say all the spaces will be striped.
Yeah, on the asphalt.
Yeah, the paved spaces. And then there we are again, in our.
But then we can just, you can just add something about handicap spaces will also have signage or something, you know, required.
Marked as handicap.
Marked as handicap, something like that, okay, so.
I hate to do it, but we have to hear it, so.
All paved parking spaces will be striped.
And marked, and handicap spaces will be marked as handicap.
Handicap spaces will be marked as such.
Is there like a particular requirement for marking handicap spaces that we can sign?
There is a handicap parking provision in the general ordinances.
I think the definitely was just gonna get us where we need to go.
Yeah.
Can't imagine we'd need to dig too much deeper down that road.
I just thought she knew off the top of her head, like, you know, per whatever section.
Well, we could just say per section one dash thirty-three, three of the general ordinances.
Great.
I mean, it just says that they have to, you know, white lettering with the blue background with the words and.
Just put the section in there.
Alright, so we've got, I think now, we've got the parking and the lighting with our conditions marked. I want to revisit some of our earlier conditions.
May I interrupt about, I'm sorry, about the pavement, the surfacing requirement? Just because we were tracking the actual language, I think it missed, I think it just said bituminous material and didn't account for the option for cement concrete material.
She's right, and I did miss that. Can we add that language in?
With bituminous or?
Or, can you repeat that?
Cement concrete.
Cement concrete. No, that's, yes, that's fine.
Okay.
Unless someone here disagrees with that?
No.
It was my fault, I missed it. Okay, so, we've talked about some other conditions, I'm gonna move on to the next, now that we have those out of the way. And I want to try to get the sound one, outdoor music sound control. At the last meeting, it was discussed that a four foot high, twenty foot wide, at that point, plexiglass barrier would be used. You had mentioned in this and in your presentation that it doesn't necessarily have to be plexiglass, you just want it to be barrier. We kind of had the question and a little bit of homework, and it's hard to without any, you know, professionals, to, you know, to tell me, is this sufficient? To find out if a barrier like this is going to actually help in reducing noise. I did my own research, which certainly doesn't qualify as expert in, in, but the simplest of searches shows that, that plexiglass in particular is, is used regularly as a, as a sound barrier.
Especially in airports. That's where the idea came from.
I mean, it was just all over, it's in heavy use. So, but now you're saying not plexiglass, which means it could be any material, so that kind of makes things a little dicey, but.
I'd rather stay with the plexiglass, that's why I mentioned it at the last meeting, because he is right, the airports use it a lot. And it will be.
Yeah, I mean, I found pages and pages and pages of people successfully using it in my research, as a good sound barrier. Do you guys have any comments?
As long as it's a suitable, as plexiglass is a suitable material for reducing the sound.
As long as it works.
Deflecting it or whatever.
Well, I'm not an expert, so I throw that out there. I'm assuming you all did some research on it as well, I mean, did you come to the same conclusion?
It's gonna have to work.
No, I only came up with that because of the airports and small planes
Okay.
areas use plexiglass as a sound barrier.
Does anyone have any comments on that? Do they feel that will be sufficient?
Highways don't use it.
I have no way of knowing if it will work or not.
I'm sorry, can.
I don't know.
Name and, if we're gonna keep that in the record, a member of the public just spoke.
Do you want to come up and state that for us all to hear?
Or just state your name and.
Denise Sarwak, sixty-six Clark Street.
Thank you.
And your comment was that highways don't use plexiglass? And the point, if I'm understanding correctly, you're trying to make is
For noise barriers.
That that would be louder than live music. Okay. So, here we are, my feeling on this is that that's, that's probably the best we're gonna get, and it's good enough. Both for me are true. No, any disagreements?
So what, what you're proposing is that we stick with the plexiglass requirement?
Yeah?
Yes.
Okay.
Jess, do you see any precedents that, that you feel would?
The only time, in, in my knowledge, since I've been here, that the board has addressed sound is in mixed-use buildings downtown where you required soundproofing, but you didn't get specific about the material. However, there are fire codes in terms of soundproofing for indoor. And so there are already regulations that were in place that were gonna define what materials they were gonna use and it was a whole different set of regulations.
I mean, it may be that I, my research showed that plexiglass work, I didn't do research on other materials, because that's what was put forth before us. So that was the point of my focus, so I came here prepared to say, okay, I looked at this and it looks like it's gonna work. You're suggesting here that it could be any material, and I, I don't know if that's for beautification or expense or what that might be, but that puts me back to where I don't know if it's gonna work, so I feel I need to require plexiglass, because that's where my research was. Are you guys on board with that?
Yes, we are.
Alright, so then, I think we had a condition before that said in addition, there were two of them, live music between the hours of two and eight, and let's take a look at what that was exactly here, I think we'll comment it.
Yeah, I'd like to see the minutes from the last meeting in addition to what's in the memo.
Do you have them? I have them here. You'll take me a sec to pull them out.
What I had written down was no amplified outdoor music shall be held between the hours of two and eight. Which, in my interpretation, means that somebody could amplify music at nine or at one.
Wait, did you say no amplified outdoor music between two and eight?
That's what I had written down.
Oh, so it's in, okay, that needs to be changed.
And this says, disallowed only between two and eight.
Yeah, okay, so, so let's get that.
My notes could be very, could be wrong, but that's what I had written down in my, in my notes.
Okay, can you read the, the way we want it?
Well, I, my recollection is that we were talking about limiting outdoor amplification to between the hours of two PM and eight PM.
Right, that's it, and do we still agree on that?
Yeah.
Is that what everyone remembers?
Yes.
Okay.
Does that, do you have that, Jess?
Outdoor amplified music shall be held only between the hours of two and six PM.
Eight.
Oh, eight, sorry.
Is there a hand? I'm sorry. Is this about the sound? Please come on. I think I saw another hand there, we'll get to you next if I did it. Okay, please, come on. Name and address, please.
Okay, my name is Ray Redfern, and I'm on the licensing board. And we issued the entertainment license, okay. When the owners came in, they applied for an entertainment license. When we issued the license, it was only for the tasting room with acoustic type music. It did not include the outside whatsoever. So with them playing the music outside, they do not have a license, entertainment, to be playing music out there. So it's in violation of the entertainment license. So, it's an issue that we would have to take up on the licensing board, because it's in violation of it.
That's good to know.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I don't think that changes our putting limitations here, and it would just mean we'd put this.
No, we have to be taking care of it, the licensing board. But we're talking about the music outside, love, love music.
Okay.
So what we would be doing is saying, if they were properly licensed to do it, they would be limited to these specific hours.
Regardless with the late license, with our language for when they can do it, they still have to have a license.
They have to have a license.
And, and just a reminder to the board that all of our decisions actually have language in there that says that, that the applicant, it, it makes them aware that there may be other permits that they are required in order to be in compliance with, with this decision. So there's language in there in that decision that states that.
Oh, good, I was gonna ask.
Right.
Yes, thank you.
Yeah.
I was gonna ask.
So those decisions that I've been sending you as review, that's, there's language in there.
Yeah, that's what I said before.
Okay, so.
That's why I sent it to you.
Was there another question on, on the sound issue? Okay, I, too many, I'm gonna, I think you had it up first.
John Knievel, seventy-four Hill Road. My big beef with the brewery is the noise. You know, of course, it wasn't what we were sold, a couple guys and I on the board, the way this was presented to the neighbors, and we were all in support of it. Now you can't find anybody on our street that is, and it's due to traffic, noise. And, and I understand Eric's, you know, now he's trying to backpedal and try to make us all, you know, give us some concessions and stuff. We went to the licensing board and apparently they were sold a different bill of goods. So, my only concern with what you're proposing with the, with the, with the, with the barrier, is that four feet is awfully short. I know, we don't, we don't have the pictures here tonight, but we showed pictures of amplifiers that were up this high. So, maybe you can make some concession that, I don't, I don't know if something this tall is gonna stop amplifiers that are above it. Even if they're facing the other direction. So maybe you could take some consideration.
Thank you.
Right, what I think we should do is allow amplified music. But like the licensing board is gonna have the, tell them the size of the amplifier and stuff like that. No, we can, we can allow them that amplified music, but they have to set the standards.
You think that this, that that condition should be before the licensing board, not us?
Absolutely.
Do you agree with that?
No, we allow it, and it can be amplified, but they would control it.
You're talking about the amplifier, not the sound wall thing.
Just the amplifier.
Yes, that makes sense to me. I.
There's some other questions there, but I have to say that I find the above four feet to be reasonable. You know, asking it to be a little bit higher. Why, why did you select four feet?
Just in our research, that seemed like a
Are you planning on having amplifiers higher than that?
I, it just.
You don't, yeah, okay, that's fair, that's fair.
You want to know, it's very.
Typically what we do for, I mean, I just want to kind of back, like, take a step back for a minute. Typically what we do for sound mitigation, for things like, you know, whatever sound is coming from an industrial plant or something, is a, is a permanent like fence or plantings of some kind. This portable sound barrier is sort of a compromise that we've been considering. I mean, we're all sort of thinking like, plexiglass, will this work? What is this? I mean, maybe we need to, you know, take a step back and think about a more permanent traditional sound barrier that's more in line with what we normally would do for something like this.
Well, the argument that was made that plantings won't work in there, I tend to, I tend to agree. I mean, the, the kind of sound we're talking about, I don't know that a, that a tree or a bush, I, I mean, I like that as something.
Like a, a privacy fence or something like that.
Like a wall or a barrier that's somewhere out in the field out here. What do you guys think of that?
I just think we, we should approve the amplified music and let the licensing board take care of the rest.
Right.
But that doesn't, that.
It's got nothing to do with us. Once the licensing board gets them a license, they dictate the how, how high, how loud, how long, or whatever.
But we routinely do, you know, require sound mitigation, that's part of our conditions.
Well, the reason why I took the plexiglass, because if you see the field back there, if you. Well, the reason why I took the plexiglass, because if you see the field back there, if you put a barrier back there, the sound is still gonna carry through that. So, the reason for putting the plexiglass near them is to block that from going that way.
I think we need to, we need to come to a decision on this. So, there is an idea right now for the plexiglass, and we should find out if the board wants to, wants to pursue that, or, or go another route, or get rid of it. So let's start with the plexiglass.
Can I just, again, refer you to number L of the criteria for review and approval for the special permit? Adequacy of the methods to ensure that the use will not constitute a nuisance by reason of unacceptable level of air, water pollution, excessive noise, or visually flagrant structures and accessories. So, you know, to some extent, it is under your jurisdiction in terms of noise. I, I mean, I understand where Harry is going, but I just wanna let you know that that is one of the criteria for review, and that
Yeah.
you need to at least find a finding of some sort.
Regarding it, I agree.
Regarding it.
Okay.
That's what I say.
So, I've got a couple of questions out there, so why don't we do those before we, please come up before we?
Stillberg, Thurber, eleven Fort Hill Road. You're dealing with what you, in the minutes called offensive uses, and at the moment, you're debating the hours. Another part of that was the days, and I bring this up because at the last meeting, there was actually differences among the different board members concerning the issue of hours and the issue of days. And on this, as on virtually every other issue, the acting chair supported the brewery, in fact, went beyond what the brewery requested, because when they proposed what conditions they would be willing to have imposed upon them, he suggested, I'm reading from the minutes. Zarvis stated that two to eight PM time period was too restrictive and not business-friendly. James, I'm skipping a sentence. James said he did not see the necessity for restricting music to certain days of the week. So the question is not simply a question of hours, it is also a question of days, and that brings me to the larger point, which I need to make now, because unfortunately I must leave. And that is, I understand why you all need to spend so much time going through point-by-point criteria for special permit approval, twelve, seven, nine. I appreciate that, that's fine, but that's not really the reason they proposed the amendment to the special permit, and that's not really the reason we're here to respond. By spending all of the time focused on those criteria, subparts A through L, we're actually avoiding missing the primary point. And the primary point is that they came to two different meetings and proposed amendments to the original special permit, in which they agreed if you would in fact accept some of their interpretation, which we do not accept.
Okay, we're talking about sound now.
I'm sorry, but I need to leave, and I need to make this point, and it is, it is a larger point. You're talking about sound, and then you'll be talking about sewage. By the way, we had our, we had our septic tanks pumped this week. And, and Whitley said to me, when I said something about, well, I guess when, in essence, they've got the new sewage line, and we can connect to that, and we won't need the septic tank anymore.
Mr. Thurber, I don't know about your sewage. I apologize for whatever that is that you're dealing with, but we're talking about sound now, so I need to keep you on topic.
Can we not allow me to speak to other points as well?
Right now, we're dealing with this, I'm sorry that you can't be here later, but we're trying to keep on focus so we don't get distracted.
Once again, you, the chair, are supporting the brewery by restricting what and when and how long we can speak.
I understand you may feel that way. I need to ask you to step down, unless you have something about sound.
No, no, I, I, I have, I go back to the broader issue. They have proposed two amendments to the special permit, and we have not discussed the conditions that they said that they were willing to impose upon themselves.
This doesn't, I'm sorry, sir, please, that's quite enough. I need to ask you to, I need to ask you to step down now, please.
I'm not surprised at all.
Please step away from the podium.
From the beginning, you have been that most outspoken, consistent voice, supporting the brewery.
You're out of order, sir. That's quite enough.
Even going to the May meeting, where you, when he attempted to withdraw his application.
Come on. Would you please let us continue the meeting? We have a lot to get through tonight.
For a beer garden, you encouraged him not to do so.
Please sit down.
Mr. Thurber, I will call the, I will call the authorities if I need to, if we cannot keep ordering this meeting. I'm not kidding.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, so.
May I, may I respond to the noise issue?
So I just wanna reiterate what Jessica pointed out, that excessive noise is the issue, and the only thing that, other than from just general members of the public, you have people that live on the street that claim the noise is too loud, you have the brewery saying it's not too loud. The only third-party, non-interested evidence anyone has that I've, that we were able to come up with were the police reports, and at no time were they, did they find excessive or unreasonable noise.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, we're talking about noise here. We've got this plexiglass, we have some debate, we have some debate as to whether or not it was in our purview. It is, as Jessica pointed out. Plexiglass is really all we have to work with. I'm comfortable with that, but we need to decide, I, I think you want something more.
My, my problem is less about the plexiglass and more about the portable nature of it, because I think that that's going to be prone to user error, and also, just, it just feels sort of murky to me. So my preference would be for a permanent structure of some kind.
Okay.
So, yeah, I think I'm just more comfortable with a hedgerow or a fence, or, you know, something along those lines.
More would you, I, I think right now, they're, they're sort of saying the plexiglass would go right here.
Right, so the, so, the outdoor music, which is currently not permitted for, is happening on the front porch here. So, they're talking about blocking off this spot. I mean, here's the thing, like, I'm not a sound engineer, but I think, um, if we, if we have photographs showing amplifiers that are up higher than four feet, then that's not going to be sufficient. Um, and so, we may need a six-foot structure.
A permanent structure like a, a piece of wood or something that, that blocks it off.
We need, like a piece of fence, yeah.
How do you all, how do you all feel about that, as opposed to a, a temporary?
The, the reason we?
Well, how high do you wanna go? Eight foot, six foot, ten foot? You know, it's, we have to start somewhere.
We are so not qualified to answer these questions. Go ahead.
You have to start somewhere.
Hi, my name is Nicola Grhowsky. I am the clerk to the licensing board. I just wanna clarify something. Ray had spoke about that they were not licensed for outdoor. There are no restrictions on their entertainment license. I understand that Ray and Kelly on the board were under the assumption, but there are no restrictions that are on the license.
Okay.
So I just wanted to put that out there. Yes.
So they can have outdoor? Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
Okay, so I may have misspoken about whether it's currently permitted for or not, but what we're talking about is if there is to be outdoor music, either now or in the future, we wanna mitigate the sound that's coming from that. And we know that there has been music there in the past, and that sound has been an issue for the neighbors.
I agree, that it has been an issue. I mean, it's, it's certainly.
So I think we've established that.
And I think they wanna do something about it.
Yeah.
And, and it's just about trying to come up with a board here, and I think what we're down to now is a height and either permanent or temporary. So why don't we deal with the height? That might be easier. How about six feet instead of four? That's high enough that it's up above most people's heads, and I think that should cover any, any difficulties in, that were, you know, it being too small. That's the standard size of a fence, I think.
Right, that's why, that's why I was proposing.
And that's, that's my logic in the decision-making process of coming to six feet. Is that amenable to the board? How do you feel about that?
Makes sense.
Six feet.
Well, I'd rather actually keep it six in order for it to be consistent with the fencing requirements.
Okay, yeah. Now, now, let's talk about the permanent or the temporary. Temporary allows them to move it, if they were to do something, I mean, right now, they're doing it here, and that's sort of where they, they wanna do it, but licensing, I mean, we're not putting a stipulation as to where it's going to be on the property at this point. If they had it temporary, then it's something they could put wherever they are. There is a point to why temporary might be advantageous.
I think temporary is fine, if he uses it.
Has to be used.
That's the key. Is he gonna follow what we're telling him to do?
I assure you, if I do not, Thurber will let you guys know.
Do we have any actual control over temporary structures? I mean, just?
So we can't actually require? Okay, that's a valid point. I mean, we could still put a, a structure, a, 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 a decision in there, or a comment rather, saying that, that when playing loud music outs, or amplified music outdoors. Yeah, I'm losing it. Amplified music outdoors, you would have to use a temporary sound mitigation structure, right? We can, we can still do that.
I'm sorry, you're looking at me. Spacing out for a moment. So you wanna do what? You wanna put up a?
The concept of putting in a stipulation that a temporary structure would have to be used when amplified outdoor music is, is, to mitigate sound, is a precedence for something like that?
Not that I'm aware of, but that doesn't, you know.
So, if you're talking temporary, what are you going to use?
It's a twenty-foot-long, six-foot-high or, six-foot-high.
Twenty-foot-long, a six-foot-high, plexiglass.
Plexiglass or fence.
Which I think would be easier to move, and if it doesn't work, who does it?
Yeah, but if it's six feet high, how do you get it in and out of doors and stuff like that?
Well, it'd probably be something permanent left out there, probably in the back of a building.
What's that? Yeah.
Probably left in the back of the building where they are, and have it brought out when they have the exterior music.
This is insane. We have to get through this, and it's a difficult thing for us. We like the idea of sound mitigation. A sound mitigation barrier must be used when playing outdoor amplified music. Maybe we're just overthinking this.
Right.
And we just need to say, we just need to put it down to a sound mitigation barrier must be used when playing outdoor amplified music, and leave it at that. The frank truth is, we're not qualified to, to put stipulations in beyond that.
But the suggestion was?
Is it about sound?
Yeah.
Come on down.
Do I have to go down? I did it, won it.
It's the camera. It's open meeting, I have to, I'm sorry.
She's just saying for any type of entertainment, not just, not just sound, not just amplified music.
Amplified outdoor. Amplified outdoor. I don't, no, I mean, that would be the city, I mean, we don't have any sound ordinance, per se, here in East Hampton, so, I'm comfortable with amplified outdoor.
Right.
You?
Yeah.
Yes, no?
Yes.
So I think we have some language?
So a sound mitigation barrier must be used when, you wanna just, you want it just for amplified?
Amplified outdoor music.
When amplified outdoor.
Nothing louder than that. What else could it be?
Yeah, that's, that's the worst.
When amplified outdoor music like is being played is, must be used.
When, when playing amplified outdoor music. Playing might not be the right word.
Yeah.
But now you leave the barrier up to them.
I do, but we're not qualified to make the decision.
You're leaving it up to them, and it's.
I may tweak that to be more grammatically correct when I draft the decision, but I get the essence of it.
Okay, so, let's talk about the hours. We fixed the hours?
Oh, wait a minute.
Could you, I'm sorry, oh, I apologize, I didn't, I didn't catch that. Go ahead.
No, you're leaving them up to what structure they're gonna use
Yeah.
to block that amplified sound.
That's right.
The only suggestion I made was the plexiglass. I like it read into that with the suggestion of use of plexiglass.
I'm in favor of that.
I mean, it's not something defermental. He can try it. If it doesn't work, he can always say, we're gonna try something different.
No, if we put this language in here, he's required to use what we put in there. So we have to be careful to, you understand what I'm saying?
I understand that, but I'm saying that if we use that as a suggestion, if he comes back to us and say, that isn't working.
I think, because, well, I agree, the plexiglass in my research is.
If we word it as a suggestion of the plexiglass, and it doesn't work, can he, does he have a viable reason to come back?
How about this, how about this? A sound mitigation barrier such as plexiglass must be used when amplified music is played outdoors.
Yeah, sounds great.
That's good. Thank you, Jessica.
Okay. Can you read back the, the hours that we had, the statement we've made about hours?
Outdoor amplified music shall be held only between the hours of two and eight PM.
Okay, are we good with that?
Yeah.
Have we dealt with sound?
That's the way we dealt with that.
We're done with sound?
Yeah.
Okay, that's three issues that we've got underway. I'd like now to talk about the language in the comment section of the original permit that is, the, oh, I'm sorry, I didn't see your hand there. What, what would you, are you talking about sound? Okay, yeah, I missed you. My bad.
Speaking of sound.
Hi, Jason Duda, thirteen Winter Street, and also a member of the licensing board. I just have one question that might help us out later on, is what you just said in the condition for sound, as far as the mitigation, sound mitigation, as Jessica so eloquently put it. Is that, in your opinion, as a board, a tacit approval for outdoor amplified music, as far as the planning board is concerned?
It's a restriction if it's used. I certainly don't believe that I'm approving or disapproving it, however, that's up to you guys as well, and what you intend. My intent is that it's not my job to approve whether or not he gets outdoor music or not. It's my job to make sure that uses are safe to the public and to the community.
Well, you have to the licensing board, you know?
Well, that's why I'm asking, is, I'm, I'm wondering is, because the language itself implied that you weren't denying them permission in the special permit that you would issue. You're not denying
We are not.
amplified music outdoors.
No. Okay, thank you. Yeah. All right, so we got the sound done, and let's talk about the language. Last meeting we were here, we said that we kind of generally approve of the, the language that, that the amendment wanted to add. I've had a little bit of time to think about that, and this new memorandum we just got put some, put some language before us that's a little bit different. You added a few, a few pieces into it. I want to look at that again and make a suggestion of something completely different. And I, my thought was that maybe that language should say, "The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with secondary uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise." The reason I suggest that compared to the language that's being presented, is the language that's being presented is kind of keeping in the old language and then including in these exceptions, and that's muddy, and I don't think that's good work on our part.
No, that second one sounded, that first one you said, it sounds pretty good.
Can you say it one more time? I'm not good auditorily.
That sounds really good.
Sorry.
"The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with secondary uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise."
That sounds good.
Would it be possible to say incidental, just because that's the language that's used and allowed
Where?
to a manufacturing instead of secondary?
Incidental.
Incidental.
So we'll primarily
That's.
We'll primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages.
I wonder actually.
Yeah, I'm good with that.
I wonder actually if it would make sense to state what the actual primary use is in the table of uses, which is manufacturing facility, because?
Yeah, with, with the decisions that I typically draft in the, in the narrative aspect of the decision that talks about basically what the applicant has asked and what you've reviewed, basically a summary of, of what has been put before the board. I typically put in there, in addition to, you know, the advertising dates and all that stuff, what category this is being reviewed under, under the table of uses, and I say the number, and I, and I put in parentheses the use next to that number, so that it's clear, so that we always know moving ahead.
Yeah, I'd like to make sure.
What use category this even is being allowed to be permanent under.
Because that was not in the original permit, and so we went to review this. The first question was, what is this?
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the, in the, like, almost the first or second paragraph of the decisions. It'll say what uses.
This simplifies and clarifies. Instead of taking the mess and then making exceptions to it.
Right.
I say, the mess needs to go, and we need to do our job as a good job, and clarify it from beginning to end.
Sounds good.
Yeah. The only other issue I can see is that we don't have a definition for tasting room, so when we say tasting room is an incidental use, that, that's maybe still a little bit muddy. But, I think we, we're sort of in a tricky situation, because that's what this is. It's not, we're not in a situation where we feel that use is prohibited, but theoretically, we could have a problem where what the definition of tasting
People coming up with tasting room.
room comes into play later on. I guess it would default to the dictionary definition, since it's not defined.
Yeah, the zoning, the zoning kicks to, anything that's not defined, there's language in here that says, words not defined in either place shall have meaning given in the Webster's Unabridged Dictionary, third edition.
Which may or may not have tasting room in there. But then there's also something about industrial language, it says?
Uses listed in the table of use regulations under the classes retail and service trades and wholesale trade and manufacturing shall be further defined by the shall be further defined by the standard industrial classification manual published by the U S Bureau of Census.
Say that three times fast.
So I think we're probably covered-
Yeah.
-with that, it just-
Okay.
Yeah.
So, shall I read it again?
Yes, please.
"The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise." Now, I'd like your opinion. Does that cover what, what you were attempting to do here? I want to, you know-
The facility will primarily produce-
Yeah, I'm sorry, I've got this thing-
Produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses of a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise.
I think it should somehow relate back to how the A B C C, to what we have, this tasting room, like, this is how we sort of got it discussed before. It wasn't, like, if we're discussing what tasting room is-
Yeah.
I think that that's an issue. So I think that we maybe even have to present with you what we actually have in a legal form, saying that we're a farmer brewer, allow pouring permit, is that any other, rather than, because what's, what's a tasting room?
So you're suggesting that the language we should-
I think the attorney has this-
-adopt would be-
With incidental uses-
As allowed under a farmer's, a farmer brewery pouring permit.
Well, not the, well, I guess that was limited to the tasting room. What about just the farmer brewer license, which includes in that the authority to get the pouring permit?
I'm looking to the licensing board. I'm sorry to put you on the spot, but I want to make sure that the language is-
Yeah, we all want it to be-
Did you say you had a copy of the license?
I have a copy of, yeah, I've got a copy of the pouring permit. You all, you all have copies, I'm sure, in here. I'll need this back, though. It's the only copy I have. And then this is the farmer brewery license. So is the license, does the, is the pouring permit attached to the license? Is it like, the license is the umbrella with the pouring permit attached to it? Okay.
Yeah, so the, the law that allows them to get the farmer brewer license has a section in there that allows them to also get a pouring permit.
So what we're talking about right now is one word, one phrase, tasting room, and making sure that we fully identify it, so that the uses that we're all agreeing with here, which include the use of the farmer's pouring permit, are included in that use. So we're saying, expand tasting room. Right now, we have, "The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise." So it'd be incidental uses to include a tasting room-
No, with incidental uses as permitted under a farmer brewery license, correct?
Farmer brewery license.
That works for me. Does that work for you guys?
That's what I have.
But then I think you also, we would also want you to add the language-
The products and merchandise?
Right.
Yes. Do you, did you get that, Jess?
No, as permitted, hold on, as permitted, under the farmer-
Farmer hyphen brewery license.
License, including-
And then it would be in retail of products and merchandise.
Such, I mean, there's, I need some word to connect. So such as, or, like, I, I guess I don't know where-
Oh, I think it's and also.
It's and also, yes.
Oh, all right, thank you.
It's a new thought.
But I'm confused about this.
And also-
The farmer brewery.
Yeah.
Under the farmer brewery license and also retail, what do, I'm sorry, I missed it.
Uh, it said, yeah, no, I'm sorry, it said, "And retail and products and merchandise." I'm sorry, "And retail of products and merchandise." That's a separate dot of its use.
Okay, from the top. "The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses as permitted under the farmer brewery license as, and retail of products and merchandise," as well as retail of products and merchandise?
So is that amenable to you?
I think, I think that's clear.
You think so?
We'll, we'll see again in five years.
Doesn't feel super clear to me, or I'm confused about-
It doesn't seem probably true.
I'm confused about making the incidental use contingent on a license, because I feel like that could get confusing if there was ever-
If it gets revoked or the state law changes or anything.
Exactly. So, um-
Maybe keep the original incidental uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise, and then expand on it, which allows for the use of a farmer's-
No, I just, no, you're going backwards.
Okay, yeah, all right. Help me out here then. Someone throw me a bone. How do we get it?
Refer to the licensing board.
Or I'm wondering if Jessica has any thoughts on this, though.
I would love to have you right up at that podium right there.
It's the retail aspect.
What about as permitted under the farmer brewer law? Or, please help me.
Go ahead.
Jason Duda, thirteen Winter Street. So I guess what I would appreciate first is, Jessica, could you read back what you, what you had just-
The facility, and this is not a condition, this will be in the narrative part of the decision, that the facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses as permitted under the farmer brewery license, as well as retail of products and merchandise.
Now, I think one thing that Jessica, you pointed out, and I think either, I think Chet also said it, is that certainly the licensing board has the real purview as to the, the issuance and of the license or the renewal at this point of the license. What I think, and I think I can speak for, for the board at this point, is that it would be nice to have some clear direction, some clearer direction from the planning board as to what exactly incidental means.
Secondary.
Okay, so then-
Which allows for, they still get to do it.
It's not the primary, it's like accessory to. So the primary, the primary use is manufacturing with basically an accessory use of, I mean, it's not, we're not using tasting room now, because there's been some discussion about definition, but-
But I mean both primary and secondary are allowed uses?
But the farmer brewery, I mean, I think where, I think where Jason is going is that the farmer brewery license is actually the primary, I mean, defines the primary use of what's happening in this facility. So, because it's allowing him to brew, right? Am I, I'm, I'm making sure I'm getting this conflict here. So it's not secondary. It is the primary use, is the production of beer. That primary use is, is ruled by the farmer brewery license.
How about this? "The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcohol beverages in accordance with the farmer brewer's license?"
I feel like we don't-
"With incidental or incidental uses to include a tasting room and retail of products and merchandise." Like, move it to the for instead of aft, and I'm hearing nay all around me.
I just feel like we don't need to refer, like, to an external-
You don't want to call it the farmer brewer's license?
State law thing. I, I mean-
That leaves us with tasting room, which is very ambiguous.
So, yeah, so I'm sorry, I know this is like, we're all tired and-
Hungry.
Hungry.
We're going to run out of time.
I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the definition section. I think this may help clarify what you're asking, and also might require a slight, another slight word change. So in the, in the, in the definitions in the zoning ordinance, we have use, comma, accessory, not incidental. And that is a use incidental and subordinate to the principal use of a structure or lot or a use, not the principal structure. And then there's more restrictions, like the area can't exceed forty percent of the structure. I'm seeing if there's anything else relevant in here. So that's, that's the basic gist of it when we talk about an accessory use. The, the table of uses allows accessory uses for manufacturing facilities.
Right, but the, the conflict with the current language is that the farmer's brewery license is the primary use of that site.
Yeah, I understand.
So that's where that conflict needs to get resolved.
Right.
So.
So, but we may need to say accessory to instead of incidental to.
I'm fine with that, accessory instead of incidental, but about the-
But, but the incidentals in the table of uses is-
Right, and, and the definition of manufacturing.
So we don't-
And I'm afraid that if we go to accessory, that, that incorporates a whole new set of requirements, because that's really a much bigger use than what their use is.
Right.
So you're-
Tasting room is a very space-wise, monetarily-wise, it's a much smaller portion of their primary use than-
So you're saying it doesn't rise to the level of accessory use?
Right.
I don't know about that.
I personally agree. How do you guys feel? Oh, I'm sorry. Are you still up there?
I'd rather not be. Well, I, one of the, well, the second reason why I raised my hand was, I, as I said, the licensing board does have the purview here, and we're looking for a little bit of direction, as we want the boards within our city to work cooperatively in conjunction with each other. Then, just to say that, I, on the initial approval of this, the license that they now currently have, I did not participate in that process. I'm participate, I will participate in the renewal, but I did read the language of the planning board's initial approval of the special permit, and when I read it, after the fact, of course, I, the impression that I got as a citizen was that you were pushing towards it not being a bar. This is not the intention of that special permit, was for this establishment to be a bar. And when you say that its primary function is that of a manufacturing facility, and with a, whether you say it's an accessory, of it being a tasting facility as well. I've been there, and you've been there, you've done your site visits. I've visited the establishment myself, and it certainly seemed like a bar when I was there. The way that the planning board is now, and the planning board, you, you folks are doing your due diligence, and it's much appreciated. It seems it's the direction you've been with your conditions, have been trying to make sure that the facility itself is amenable to that type of that operation, whereas if it was strictly a manufacturing facility and not a tasting, which can kind of morph into more of a bar sort of situation, bar-type situation, then that, that's where, as a member of the licensing board, I look at it and say, well, what exactly was the intention of the planning board? And that's, I think, as, as what the licensing board is looking to you, is just, is, in your opinion, by issuing the special permit, what do you folks think this establishment is primarily, and what is its use primarily?
It's a good question.
Primary, one thing.
Harry told us-
That it can't be primary, other thing.
Harry told us before that it was very much their intention, that it would not be a bar, and that's why the language was in, was in the original permit. Do you still agree with that?
Not necessarily a bar, just, just selling beer. You want to call it a bar?
No.
Well, they'd be selling growers or whatever. There was no retail. They weren't selling it. You could, you could sample, but you couldn't sell it. You want to call it a bar, call it whatever, what do you want to call it? I don't, you know, I don't know.
So I'm willing to-
However, what's before us now is an amendment where they're basically saying-
It's exactly-
-our business has changed. We want to be expressly permitted to conduct this as an, as an accessory or incidental use, while manufacturing remains the primary use.
Right.
So, so I, I think-
We're all talking about, because the law changed, about them now having a use that allows alcohol to be served.
Right.
Okay, that's fine. I just, I, the only reason I did come up is, is, I, I, we want the language for us, and for the entire city and the Butters, everybody, for the, your language to be as clear as possible, because it's-
We're trying.
I know, and it's difficult. I served on this board as well. I know how difficult that can be. So just encourage you to try to be as clear as possible. Fortunately, you have someone who's very good, clear, concise, like, so.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. And I'm sorry to have kept you at the podium. My apologies for that.
It's not a problem.
All right, so we're back to the language, and, and the issue that you have is you don't want the farmer brewery, those words to be in there.
I'm struggling to clearly state what my problem is, because I'm tired, but it's-
It's hard.
Can we get a read back of what we have so far?
"The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental uses as permitted under the farmer brewery license, as well as retail of products and merchandise."
That works for me.
But it conflicts, is, is, because the farmer's brewer's license allows the primary use of manufacturing of beer. So to say that it's with incidental uses as permitted under the farmer brewery license, I mean, maybe it doesn't, maybe I'm overstretching and overreaching it. It just seems that it's conflicting because-
I don't want anything that even seems conflicting. So, so how do we fix it?
And I think what, what also is, is, you know, nagging at me is that we talk about incidental uses, we want to talk about, you know, kind of concrete uses that are in our zoning ordinance, and the farmer brewer pouring license is not, like, really, it's not a use, it's a license. So, so I think we need to stick to something that's more akin to a use, and now I'm also concerned about whether this constitutes an accessory use. What does incidental use mean? Does it mean something different from accessory use?
You could, you could phrase it this way.
Is it just a typo in the zoning ordinance?
There's lots of typos in the zoning ordinance, not the first one. "The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with an incidental uses of a six hundred square foot room for the serving of alcohol," you know, describe what a tasting room is. Don't use the, the term tasting room if you have concerns about how they'll be interpreted as a definition. Just define it.
Which would be with a six hundred square foot room where the pouring of alcohol is allowed?
For the ser, for the pouring, because we have a pouring permit, for the pouring-
Pouring of alcohol.
Of-
Beverages.
Uh, no, well, no, no, no.
No, no, it has to be alcohol.
Beverages produced on site.
Yep.
I think that's key to the, key to the description, that it's not the serving of somebody else's beer. It's the serving of his beer in his premise.
I'm seeing a lot of head nodding. Is your, is your head nodding as well?
I'm, I'm listening.
Okay, we need to try to word this. So basically, we're back to my original, but pull out tasting room, and instead, we're going to say-
With incidental uses-
To include a six hundred square foot room.
Including a six hundred square foot, um, area-
Fair enough.
For the serving.
Of alcoholic beverages produced on site?
Of alcohol, I mean, we're saying-
We're really working it. Say again. Oh, I see what you're saying. Yeah, we can get rid of six hundred square foot and just go on site.
No.
No? Why no?
Because then-
I will, I will tell you that in the narrative, there will be something somewhere that says six hundred square foot. I mean, I, I do, if, if you guys read the decisions I send you afterwards, I often get, put square footages in there to divide spaces.
It can't be more than forty percent.
Go ahead.
A tasting room.
You could just say tasting room.
Okay. I go into this tasting room, and I taste their beer. I walk out. Can I come back in and taste again, or do I have to buy it?
Well, they're allowed to, to sell it and pour it to you.
They sell pints.
Yeah, you can buy pints there.
Then they're a bar.
Oh, gosh.
If someone's serving me on that side, and I'm receiving it on this side, is that a bar or not?
Whether I agree or disagree, it's, it's, they have the right to do it, because it's a bar.
If you want to go to the zoning, a bar is defined in the zoning as a primary establishment serving alcoholic beverages in which the principal business is the sale of such beverages at retail for consumption on the premises, the principal business.
Okay, so then it's not a bar.
Okay. So let's get that language, you were working on it, it was so promising. Maybe the six hundred square foot needs to get worked on. Let's just hear what you've got so far and see if we can tweak that part. We're getting close to the table.
"The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with incidental use, with incidental uses." Can I do the retail of products and merchandise first, because it seems to be?
Sure, sure. Oh, yeah. Let me let her finish- Let me let her finish reading this and then I'll give you.
The retail of.
No, we're out of camera.
Products.
Three o'clock, we're down.
No, I don't, we're not on a DVD tonight, so.
Oh, good news. Okay, good.
Okay.
For the retail of products and merchandise as well as. We can define tasting room. A tasting room.
Defined as.
Yeah.
Oh, boy.
What is a tasting room?
A tasting room for the serving of.
Pouring.
For the serving, pouring?
Their permit says pouring, so I'm trying to keep the language.
All right, for the pouring of.
Product.
Of products produced on-site?
Yep, good. All right, I know there's a comment, someone wants to make a comment there. I want to, I want to give her one readout for us and, and then allow it.
I have a question before we do another readout or get more comments. So I'm still wondering, Jessica, if you can explain to me the difference between accessory and incidental?
I think they're essentially the same, really, when you come down to it, the core of them are exactly the same. Incidental is, is, I, I think they're just being used differently in the definition section, that's all. An accessory use in terms of residential is an accessory apartment.
Right.
Or an accessory, I mean, any accessory use can be, it's the sort of, it's a secondary use on-site. Incidental, I don't know, I mean, maybe you have a, a different take, but in my opinion, they're.
I'm just concerned that if it rises to the level of accessory, that that imposes greater requirements on it for approvals.
Right.
Incidental is something that just sort of happens in addition to.
Yes.
Which is.
And in the table of uses, under accessory, there's a section for accessory uses that are allowed in different zones. And this is five twenty-four, number eight on the list, accessory, industrial and commercial uses to serve principal and industrial and commercial uses respectively. So my concern is that it appears to be saying, if it's an industrial use, you can have an accessory industrial use, if it's a commercial use, you can have an accessory commercial use, but not the other way around. That's my reading of it.
You can also, but you could also interpret it, the zoning, that, and this is often what we do with mixed-use buildings, is as long as that use is permitted in that zone, it's allowed in that building. So you can have a residential, you can have a commercial, you can have an industrial in the same building if all of those uses are permitted in that zoning district.
Right, and I could see that that could be a legitimate interpretation.
So, you know, if you look at retail, retail is allowed in the industrial district as a use.
Which would make accessory or incidental moot.
No, it means, no, it makes.
Because they're both allowed.
Yeah, but the, they're both allowed, but you can't, if there's a difference in requirements between having two primary uses and having a primary and an accessory use.
I recognize, but the interpretation goes either way.
No, I'm talking about whether you can have commercial accessory use in an industrial building at all.
Right, and, and it's just was described, you can have retail and industrial. Did we not?
Yes, I, I guess I'm confused about what your question is.
Well, you're saying, can they do it? And it just seems that we can, that the answer.
As an accessory use, yes. But I, I do think that, given that even though it's not a primary use, there are a lot of substantial public health, safety, and welfare concerns associated with the accessory use of a tasting room or whatever we're going to call it, that I do think that we should explicitly say that this is an accessory use and not an incidental use. I, we don't have a definition of incidental in our zoning ordinance, we do have a definition of accessory use.
Okay.
It's gotta be accessory then.
Yeah, fair enough. A long may point.
Don't confuse it.
You convinced me.
Makes sense.
The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages with accessory uses, with accessory uses for the retail of products and merchandise as well as for the serving. As well as for a tasting room for the pouring of products produced on-site.
We need to clean that up. I've, I've been holding off, I apologize. Do you want to come up and comment?
Robert Fettig, seven fifteen, Fort Yarone. Now, what is going to happen here in the near future after you decide tonight that East Hampton is looking to sell more beer and wine licenses and liquor licenses, hoping that the three breweries in East Hampton will take over the liquor licenses? Now, how is that going to affect us with this? Is that going to?
We don't have any purview over liquor licenses, although there's some, well, there were.
What, what, yeah, but.
Right, well, we're talking about restricting this to what's being manufactured on the premises, so I think that that would limit.
He can't sell what isn't manufactured.
So, you know, selling other kinds of outside.
You can't sell other products.
Just what he manufactures.
Okay. Now, one last question. Who do we call on a weekend if we find that their, the brewery is not in ordinance with their parking and occupancy?
I guess you have to go to the police department.
Pardon?
Police. Police Department Building Inspector, the normal, the normal.
They're not on, the inspector's not on duty.
We don't, that's not anything, we, we can set the guidelines, but enforcement is not something.
We've been trying to find out, and nobody will let us know.
What I've seen is the process bef- in the past, is that if, if there's a situation, call the police, they, they make a record of it, you know? They, they respond to the call and there's dispatch, and so there's a, there's a paper trail to the response of there. That will help the building inspector when he comes into the office on Monday, um, because at least there'll be a record of, of the incident.
Okay.
Yeah, so I think the key thing is that once, once a decision comes out of the planning board, then we are not the enforcement body, so anything.
Well, I know you're not the enforcement body, but we want to know who to contact.
Right.
I mean, the mayor says, go to the police. I mean, she's supposed to be the head of the town and the head of all these departments, and she's not doing a damn thing.
Police, building inspector, do you have anything about, about the language that we're using now?
I think that the language was good, I mean, but I just wanted to find out what was going to happen with these liquor licenses, but.
Understand, thank you.
I think the main thing that we can do is make sure that we've considered some of the potential nuisances as we are, you know, and problems that we're allowed to consider, and then make sure that our conditions are then something that can be enforced by someone else if there's a problem. And I think that was, that's sort of what we're grappling with is.
Always, yeah.
Is, you know, how to make that something that then, if there is a complaint, it can be, it's clear what they are supposed to be doing and can be dealt with.
Okay, I want to put our heads on this language because we have got to get through this and it's getting late.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right, have you tweaked that at all? I want, I'd like to hear it just one more time and so we can see if we're, where we need to be now. And we, we've switched it to accessories, I think, right?
Right.
I see Jessica Madley tweaking over there.
The facility will primarily produce and bottle alcoholic beverages, including, including accessory uses of the retail of products and merchandise as well as for a tasting room for the pouring of products produced on-site.
Okay. Thoughts?
No, I just.
We're all getting tired.
Well, I just have.
So, I mean, honestly, we have a question of, is, is everyone at this table at a point where they can rationally consider that sentence structure that just came out?
Absolutely.
Good.
Move on with it.
Are you, everyone?
I'm having a little bit of a hard time.
It's not making sense to me, sorry.